All right, just good afternoon.
She's not moving, so that's not working.
And we'd like to welcome all of you, those of you that are viewing, to our school board meeting for April the 7th, 2020, at a little past 3:30 because we have been experiencing technical difficulty on my end. Before we get started, we certainly want to thank our IT department for an exceptional job for all that you're doing. And for all of you out there viewing us, we hope that this will not last long. As soon as this coronavirus thing is over, prayerfully, we'll be back together. But we must continue to do what we do. At this time, we're going to ask Mrs. Jane Crawford if you will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I will do the invocation. We do not have any public comments, so we will move right into our consent agenda. Let us stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we pause this day, first of all, to give you thanks, to give you honor, and to give you glory. God, even in the midst of all that this country is experiencing with coronavirus, you're still God. And so, we thank you that it was not able to keep us from doing what we needed to do. God, we thank you for all of our teachers, administrators, our IT department, our management team, God, that are doing the things necessary to make sure that our children can still learn and grow and move forward. And so, God, we thank you for that. Now, God, as we have this virtual meeting, we pray for your divine guidance. God, that all the decisions that we make will be pleasing unto you. And we give you glory, honor, and praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Like I said earlier, we don't have any presentations, and we have no requests for public comments. At this time, we will move to our consent agenda.
Madam Chair, we make sure there's no one outside. I know we did not have any public comments submitted by email, but we're going to check outside just to make sure there's no one available.
Okay, so, but will we move on? I'm going to wait until you let us know that there is no one.
Yeah, and just for the audience, we do have sound set up outside for anyone who had wanted to come and listen to the meeting and provide public comments, but seeing none. Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you for consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. At this time, we'll start with our consent agenda. We're going to get Mr. Brad McInnis.
I have nothing to pull.
Mr. David Buckles?
I have nothing to pull.
Mrs. Holly Pickens?
I have nothing to pull.
Mrs. Jane Crawford?
I have nothing to pull, but I do have one question on the two invoices from Sniffin' &amp; Spellman &amp; Rum Burgerkirk. Are those still dealing with our insurance issues, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I have nothing to pull.
Okay, so, and I have nothing to pull. So, with that being done, we have nothing to pull from the consent agenda, meaning that we all agree what is written here. We do have an emergency item, so we will move out of our regular session into our emergency session.
We got to vote Sandy up.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Time-sensitive.
Sandy.
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 Have Mr. Thomas Bowlen working with me. Is that necessary at this time, that he comes up and reference what the two of us discussed?
Sandy.
Would you like us to proceed?
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chairman, that we approve the consent agenda.
Yes, I'm sorry. I just jumped right into the emergency session. We're coming out of emergency session, going back to the consent agenda that we may get a motion to accept. Go ahead, Mr. Buckles.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
Okay, it was motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the consent agenda as is, and second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries 5-0. Now, we will move into our emergency session.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Did I hear you say you wanted Mr. Harvey or Mr. Bowlen, one of those, to come in and address the item on the emergency?
It's only if the other board members have some questions relating to it. Mr. Bowlen did a thorough job of explaining to me along with what Mr. Justin shared with me on yesterday.
Okay.
So, I am fine. I just needed to know if the other board members had some questions or concerns.
I have none.
Go ahead, Jane. Go ahead.
I just said, "I have none."
I was going to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the emergency item as presented, extraordinary times called for extraordinary measures, and I feel comfortable with that.
I second.
Okay, who was that that seconded?
Holly.
Okay, all right. It was motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the emergency item, apogee, contract, justification, explanation, time-sensitive, and it was seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 5-0. Okay, we have no unfinished business. At this time, we will discuss our new business, the first item, consensus to advertise amendment to policy number 8450, control of casual contact communicable diseases.
Ms. Douglas?
Is this the one, Attorney Douglas, where you see if each board member, you poll each board member to see if they say advertise?
That's correct. Each board member would say whether they consent to advertise.
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 Advertise. Okay, do we need to get a motion and a second regarding that, Mr. Attorney?
No, Madam Chairperson, this is only for the consensus to advertise. It will come up for a final vote at the next meeting.
Will you speak up a little? I'm not hearing you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm across the room, but this is just for the consensus, and then the formal vote will be at the next meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. All right, item number two under discussion for new business, discussion, input, and action, resolution to grant emergency powers to the superintendent.
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak to that. That is, this is an uncommon time, and I think that it's as well deserved and needed. Anything that has been done, we can probably hint after the fact, the superintendent is in a real tough spotlight, and he's representing the board.
Okay, we're picking up some background noises, but I did hear what you said, Mr. Buckles, regarding these times that we are experiencing.
Her mic just came on.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. I would ask the board to clarify.
Just a minute, just a minute.
We need a motion or not.
Madam Chairperson, I believe your computer microphone is now working. Would you just say test 1, 2, 3?
She can't hear us.
She needs to sit in Tracy's office.
Yeah, it was coming across loud and clear just a moment ago.
Okay.
Go ahead and mute it. I went ahead and muted her on the other side. Just a second. Okay.
All right, can you hear me?
Madam Chairperson, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, yes, just to echo what Board Member Buckles said, this is a rare event for the superintendent to have this type of power alone, but it is provided for in your policy 0132 under executive on the last paragraph, and I think we should read it for the record here.
Please.
It says that the superintendent, in cases of emergency affecting the health, welfare, and safety of students, staff, or the public, may suspend any part of these policies and/or procedures, provided that the superintendent shall report the fact of the reasons for such suspension at the next meeting of the school board, and provided further that the suspension shall expire at the time of said report unless continued in effect by action of the school board. So, the purpose of this is to further the health, welfare, and safety of the students. The coronavirus pandemic certainly would qualify here under that requirement of the executive power, emergency policy that's already in place. The resolution that is before you is also time-limited to the executive order from Governor DeSantis, so it is appropriate in the scope of time as well. And it's also appropriate in the scope of the subject matter, in that the decisions that the superintendent makes must only be related to those decisions relating directly to COVID-19. And already, the district's having to make a lot of decisions on the fly, so to speak, regarding schedules, calendars, personnel allocations, and all that must be done very quickly to respond to the emergency as it is presented at hand. However, at each school board meeting, the superintendent must report exactly what the superintendent did in use of these emergency powers to be ratified by the board. So, the resolution is a description of those powers and a permission from you, the board, to exercise those powers here in this policy. But whatever the superintendent does, the superintendent still must report back to the board.
Well, does it say that he could tell us when he's doing it, what he's doing?
That would be up to the superintendent. That would be possible, yes. But the policy only requires that it be done at the next board meeting, but if the superintendent is so inclined, then the superintendent may do that.
Right, because we get all kinds of questions and phone calls and whatever. I mean, I just think, give us a heads up. I mean, it's...
And I normally try, on certain things, I normally try to reach out to you.
You do.
To keep you updated.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas, will we need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant this temporary power to the superintendent. He serves my law as our secretary to the board, and he is our chief financial, and chief educational officer, executive officer for the district.
I second.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. That was the motion made by Mr. David Buckles, that we grant the superintendent the powers that he has asked for regarding emergency powers, and it was seconded, I believe, by Mrs. Jane Crawford?
No, by Holly Pickens.
By Holly Pickens. All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposeds? Hearing none, the motion carries. And in having that passed, the superintendent has been excellent in keeping us in the loop, making sure that we are aware of everything that has been going on in the district, and so I trust him.
Thank you.
If there is nothing else in regard to the resolution to grant emergency power to the superintendent, if there are no other comments, we will now move into our board reports. We will start with you, Mrs. Holly Pickens.
Okay. First, I would just like to say thank you to the district and all the staff and our teachers, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, our parapros, everybody really has pitched in and tried to make the best out of not the greatest situation. I still have, I have a concern for our students that don't have internet access. I know that that's a problem in my area. It's a problem that we're working with them. Unfortunately, a lot of times, the students that don't have the internet service also don't have the transportation to the various sites that we have got running for them. So, that's a concern. I know many teachers are working on packets and getting information, material to them, so I mean, I have strict confidence in our teachers to get the job done.
Ms. Pickens, because this is an extraordinary situation, I'd be more than happy to ask Mr. Bowlen or Mr. Harvey to come in at your leisure to address the board on that, if you'd like an update, or we can wait till my report, whichever you so choose, but we definitely want to make sure you know and the board knows what's being done to address that matter.
Yeah, I'd like to know. Well, I would like to hear that, yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Bowlen or and/or Mr. Harvey, if you're available to come in, and we can, you know, when you get here, we can have them do that, but if you want to continue with your report.
Okay, and then, the last thing, I've heard maybe a few negative, but I've heard a lot of really positive things from parents, saying that although it is a lot of work, they're enjoying helping their children with their schoolwork. And like I said, we're just making the best out of a bad situation. And I think our district deserves an A+ for how well we've worked around things.
Amen.
Thank you.
Mrs., all right, so we're waiting now for Mr. Bowlen or for Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I texted them and...
Do you want me to go ahead while we're waiting on them?
We'll do whichever you want to do, Madam Chair. We're waiting on them to transition over here.
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Crawford?
I'd just like to echo Holly and her thanks to everyone in our district, our district leadership team, our superintendent, our teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, the students and the parents who have just done everything in their power to make this the best possible situation. Everyone across the country in public schools are in the same situation, and as Holly said, I think we're doing a great job. You know, we're flying by the seats of our pants, and we're learning every day ways to tweak this and make it better. I am very sad that, especially for high school students, activities having to be canceled like prom, you know, although it was a long time ago. I remember when I was in high school and how important those activities were, and you know, it's only for your safety and the safety of others that those have had to be canceled. I've been busy. I was in a 14-day quarantine because I had been in Rochester, New York with my grandson, so I am so glad to be out of that. I've been making masks. They aren't pretty, but they'll work. I'm not much of a seamstress, but I've got a bunch of them, and if anybody needs one, let me know. I've made one for Mr. Buckles, and I'll get that to him. Again, just stay safe, stay distance, and let's pray that this is over sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Mrs. Crawford. Mr. Buckles? Mr. David Buckles, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, if you would give your report.
Well, I would like to thank, I'd like to thank Holly and Jane's comment on our employees and how hard they're working and what they're doing to try to present in these terrible times the best they can. And I have the superintendent, he's obviously been through a tragedy in his own personal life with a family member, and he has worked hard to get through this, and I appreciate the job he's done. But more importantly, I want to let everybody know that our board members, and this wasn't started by me, I wish it was, have been praying as a group every day for quite a while. And I will tell you that I don't think it's...
Day at noon.
I think it's doing a very good job. I'm feeling good about what I see from the buses delivering food on the roads, to the teachers driving their cars through their neighborhoods where their kids reside.
It's been so cool.
Mr. Superintendent, thank you for the job you're doing, and keep, stay strong. We need you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
That's all I can add right now.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Buckles. Mr. McInnes?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes!
I'm going to echo what everybody said. I just can't thank everyone enough for everything they've done, and gratitude is just not enough to say what our people have done in the district. They're rock stars, everyone that works in the district. And, but back to a little bit normalcy here, I did attend the Kids' Cag Art. It was a wonderful evening. A lot of sponsors did that. I've got the program here at Beck, Seminole Electric, Waste Pro, Kids Care Pediatrics, Vulcan Materials Company, the Douglas Law Firm, and Charlie was there as well, the Arts Council, Daily News, Florida School of Arts, Girls' King, the Veritas Steel, all those sponsors made it possible, and there were so many talented artists that were there. And also, attended the Spring Extravaganza with the bands, all four high school bands. It was wonderful, and they are on our YouTube channel, so if it gets real dull on the Netflix, you can always check out our YouTube channel. There's a lot of good, good production there. And I just want to thank the district for providing, on their, on the district website now, all of the resources, they're extending our, all the educational services to everyone, and especially opening the door for the mental wellness support and counseling, because right now, we surely don't know what effect it's going to have on our young people, much less the old people.
And the teachers.
I'd like to know the numbers there on our website. It's 329-0538. And I want to thank y'all, board members. I'm really grateful to be a proud and part of the board. Thank you.
I'm honored to be a member with you guys, what God listed you, pick you to, all the water.
Me as well.
Pretty much just ditto to everything I have heard, to all of our administrators, our management team, the superintendent, our bus drivers, our lunch workers, to all of you, our custodial staff that's at the school cleaning, to every one of you, we appreciate everything that you are doing. And to the parents, you are now the teachers, and I know you now have a newfound respect for the teachers and some of the things that they encounter. To mention again what Mr. Buckles stated regarding our prayer group, we do this at home individually. At 12 o'clock noon, we sometimes get a scripture. We have a focus group. We have been praying individually for groups, IT departments, superintendent, daily we've been doing this, because we know, as Holly, I think, mentioned, and Jane mentioned, these are tough times, but we're going to make it. The weak fall along the wayside, the coward never starts, only the strong survive. We're Putnam Strong. At this time, Attorney Douglas?
Just want to say, the legal department's been very busy, working in close association with the administration on brand-new legal issues that come up along the way during this pandemic, and we appreciate the cooperation and the close working relationship that we have to be able to assist in those ways. And so far, everything is going as smoothly as it can go under these circumstances, but a lot has been accomplished in the last two weeks.
For sure. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Superintendent, just before we call you, because this will feed into what you are about to share, the superintendent did reach out to the churches, and our group, the Central Putnam Ministry Association, have contacted our pastors and said that there are hotspots, and there are a possibility that some of those students can park in their parking lots and use that. All right, Superintendent?
Yeah, before my comments, I'm going to ask Mr. Bowlen to come up and share information responding to Ms. Pickens's questions and concerns regarding IT and what we're doing in the district to meet the needs of our students. So, Mr. Bowlen, if you would, and Holly, would you repeat again what your questions and concerns were?
Well, my concern is for the students that don't have internet access, but also the fact that they don't have transportation necessarily to those hotspots.
Okay, so, we're looking at that on two fronts. First of all, we've already pre-identified 325 students or families or households that don't have the connectivity or are having connectivity issues, and we pushed that number out to a survey that NEFECT, well, those are the results of our survey, but we pushed that information in NEFECT, because not only were they instrumental in helping us acquire additional Chromebooks, and they should be here any day now, but they're also going to provide us with hotspots, and we should be among the first districts, among the first district in the NEFECT region to get those hotspots. And they'll be tailored to the communities, because I mean, when you think of hotspots, the next question you naturally go to is, well, is there telephone service there for the hotspot to even work? So, the IT department is identifying whether Verizon works best in that community or whether it's AT&amp;T. Usually, it's one or the other. I remember when I was in Illinois, I had AT&amp;T, and I didn't get any service, but those people who had Verizon walked around all the town with perfect service. So, we will try and tailor the hotspots for those individual families. We hadn't put that information out yet because we were still hopeful, but the news that we got today was better than hopeful, so we think that that'll be happening in the next week or so, and we can begin to push those out. In the meantime, as you know, we've reached out to several business organizations and asked if we piggyback on their Wi-Fi, and since that time, we've, well, we're constantly adding to that list. We just opened up a dialogue today with the Housing Authority to help with some of the project homes.
That's good.
Yeah, but in addition to that, we've begun to plug in our own access devices, so we don't, those businesses don't have to give out their password. So, when a student logs on, they see what they would see if they're sitting in a classroom, our information, and they use that to log on. So, we're doing everything we can to reach those who haven't already connected, and schools are narrowing that down. You know, I think we're kind of beyond the point now of just looking at, you know, gigantic trends to, you know, getting way down in the weeds and saying, "Okay, who hasn't connected yet, and what are the individual issues, and who are the families that need the most help and, you know, the fastest?" Because they just, like you said, they can't get, you know, anywhere. So, anyone that has information for those type families, if they reach out to a board member or their principals or working through teachers to try and reach out to those students or at least identify the students that haven't logged in yet, so we can then reach out to them. But we are definitely at the point where we're getting down into the weeds to reach out to individual families now and not just look for pockets or patterns of things, so...
I have concern too, and don't get me wrong, I think it's wonderful that these businesses have allowed, you know, our kids to come into their parking lots and use their Wi-Fi. That's just amazing. But, you know, it's starting to get hot, and, you know, kids sitting in a car, you know, there are kids that, you know, they might not even have air conditioning in their car. That concerns me as well. That, that concerns me as well. And I know that everyone is doing everything they can to, to make this happen, but, you know, these are things that come up and that I think about and worry about, and I'm sure y'all worried about them too.
We have, and, and the good part about it, and I know you, you guys have said it again and again today, today, the community at large has just been so helpful and grateful, and it seems as if everyone is in this together, and everyone is reaching out to lend a helping hand, and, and that families seem to recognize our efforts and wanting to help, and they've been very appreciative, and, and that just makes us work all the, that, you know, all the harder, because, you know, they, they have such great attitudes, and they're so willing to be a part of the learning process. So it's a great thing to be a part of, really.
Anybody else have a question for Mr. Boeing, reference IT or anything else? Any board members?
Any spare toilet bag?
Okay. Ms. Haw, Ms. Pickens, did that answer your question?
Yes, that's great, great.
Thank you, Mr. Boeing, appreciate it.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Boeing.
Thank you, Thomas.
So, Madam Chair, you ready for my comments?
Yes, I am.
All right. I appreciate Mr. Boeing coming in, and he's got a tremendous amount of responsibilities as, as well as our other staff, but, you know, getting that connectivity has been a major challenge for all of us. Let me mention a couple of procedural things. Today, you approved on the consent agenda to cancel the, the second meeting in April, and again, we're doing that just out of necessity right now, just because we feel like, you know, we, we need to try to limit our time together, and we're going to make a call later about the first meeting in May. We have not canceled the first meeting in May yet, we're just trying to play that by year, but we will definitely need to meet in the second meeting in May, just because that's when we need to approve our allocations for the year and so on. So we will keep you abreast of...
What's the date of that meeting, the second one?
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, I don't either.
If anybody wants, do you have...
I've got it, don't worry about it.
Yeah, it's, this is May 20-something. Darla will pull it up for us in a minute. But that will be an important meeting in...
May 19.
May 5.
May 5 is the first one.
19.
So May 19th is the second one.
Okay.
So that one definitely needs to take place. And let me just sum up, I can't be more proud of not only our district employees, but our school employees and staff, our principals. We talk to our principals daily. We have a meeting with our principals every single day, and we're starting to cut back now, but we have a standing time where we are talking to principals on Zoom, and I'm about zoomed out, I don't know about y'all, but I'm about zoomed to the limit right now, and I know our principals are, but it's just been such a need to, to share information and to make sure we are, you know, we are very organized and make sure we're doing the very best we can for our students and our parents, and I can't be more proud of what they're doing. I mean, everybody is stepping up, stepping it up to make sure that we're, we're ahead of this game right now. But our teachers are doing a phenomenal job. Our district staff has conducted a lot of online training with our teachers, and we've had some teachers that are, you know, from one gamut to the other, but they've had to step it up and, you know, really teach online that some of them had never dreamed of doing before. But we're getting a lot of comments from teachers, and I know you've seen them too, where it really is a silver lining to this dark cloud, and a lot of them are forging some relationships with their kids and their parents that probably they've never had before. And our students have just been so appreciative and wanting to be back in school, believe it or not, and wanting that connection with their teachers and their fellow students, and this is really, you know, and I'm not trying to paint an unrealistic picture, but there is some really great things going on, and I think we will learn some lessons from this experience that when we do get back in school, we'll be able to, you know, maybe do some things that we haven't done before. So I think this has been a good learning lesson for us. We talk to the state, the superintendents on a regular basis, we talk to the Department of Education. There is so much communication going on with our district and the rest of the world, you know, I, I feel very connected with not only our people in our district, but our state, our Department of Education, our, our Emergency Operations Center. We've had a conversation with them today. So there's so much information going through, we are really in touch of what's going on. But the main thing we want to do is make sure our students who do, do not have that Wi-Fi access, we are definitely concerned about that and doing everything we can to make sure that happens, and we don't want to leave anybody behind. So that's kind of the state of affairs right now, and, you know, we've made a lot of adjustments and things that we're doing for students, but students, every student will have access to those standards, I guarantee you, and our people working hard to making sure that happens. I would like to read something regarding some grant information that we need to enter into our minutes today, and the first one has to do with our 21st Century Grant, says in accordance with the application instructions from the Department, Florida Department of Education, the Putnam County School District submits the official notice for its intent to submit an application for the 2021 21st Century Community Learning Centers, the CCLC After School Programs, grant for the following schools. Melrose Elementary School, which is at 401 State Road 26, Melrose, Florida, 32666. Middleton Bernie Elementary School, that's 1020 Huntington Road, Crescent City, Florida, 32112. James A. Long Elementary School, 1400 Old Jacksonville Highway, Palacca, Florida, 32177. And Mellon Elementary School, 301 Mellon Road, Palacca, Florida, 32177.
Right.
So those will be in our minutes, and that will require, that will fulfill some of the grant requirements. The second item I want to read is the Putnam County School District submits this official notice of its intent to submit an application for the 202021 USDA Distance Learning Grant for the following schools. Jenkins Middle School, Price Middle School, Miller Middle School, and CLO, I'm sorry, CLO Over turf Junior Sixth Grade Center. As you know, we have that in the high schools, we're submitting an application now for the middle schools for the distance learning.
That's wonderful.
So again, we are on the, we're on the information superhighway as far as that technology goes, so hopefully we'll be able to earn that grant. Second, the last thing I want to mention is this is our announcement today that we are entertaining applications and submissions for the product of Putnam Initiative. We started that last year, and you recall, this is where we honor graduates of Putnam County Schools from 18 years old to 98 years old. However, however old they are, they have to have graduated from Putnam County School and are currently employed or volunteering in our county right now. So again, our purpose is we are celebrating those who are giving back to our, our district who have graduated from our schools. And let me just point out to you, those applications, Felicia Cahen has worked very hard to make sure it is accessible. You can go to our Facebook page or website, and there is a QR code on there, which is a square code, you can hold your phone over it, and it will actually pop up an application, very easy. So you can submit any individual, and let me just give you the following areas, just so you'll know this, bear with me for just a minute. In the areas of education, healthcare, law enforcement, welding, industrial manufacturing, volunteers, governmental service, entrepreneurs, agriculture. And as you know, we have a giant plaque in our district office where we put each year's winners on there, but the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce will be selecting the recipients for that. So the more people who are nominated, and again, you can nominate as many people in any of those categories as you want to, anybody in the county, as many of those nominations as possible, we'll select one person from each of those categories, okay? So again, we're working with the newspaper and the Chamber of Commerce, and this is a great time to really celebrate Putnam County. So Madam Chair, that is all the comments I have, and thank you all for being here in person and virtually.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the board, before we adjourn?
Jane, I want a handmade mask.
You want what? I'll make you one.
Thank you.
If you could make me one with the Florida NM rattler, that's orange and green, I would really appreciate it.
I'll try to come up with some orange and green.
I'm just teasing. Again, to all of our parents and all of our...
I'll get what he's doing.
Our teachers, we thank you immensely for everything that you are doing. Continue to do the great work, and if you need something, please don't hesitate to reach out to the district office so that they can address that particular need. All righty.
I think Mr. Buckles had something to say.
Please adjourn. Bye-bye, Mr. Buckles.
Mr. Buckles, go ahead. Whoa, lost the video.
Bud, can you hear me?
Yes.
I tried to order some, believe it or not, some Florida Gator material, but they were out.
I have some.
Okay, Mr. Buckles is trying to talk, and I, I...
I did...
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say I'm... I'm up.
Can't read lips.
Can't read lips.
We're not hearing you from the...
I'm hoping that by the end of May...
Holly, this was my first one.
Okay, I, I, I'm just optimistic by the end of May, things will turn around and we'll be, we'll be on the hill all across the land, so Rick, keep, keep in touch.
We'll do it, I'll, I'll keep you abreast.
You know what?
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
I think the rest heard me, Sandy, but that's okay.
Okay, uh...
Thank you.
I teach...
Thank you, Jack, and I qualify for that 98-year-old group and that product of Putnam.
Thank you, you're the best.
Almost!
Please adjourn.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good one.